We will adjourn the meeting of the Public Facilities Corporation and we will commence the meeting of the study session. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Motion will reflect that Councilmember Rosansky is absent.
All right, we will now go to clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Daigle.
None.
Councilmember Gardner?
None.
Councilmember Webb?
None.
Councilmember Selich?
None.
Mayor Proten Hen?
And none.
Okay, and I have none. All right, so the next item is the report of the Citizens Technology Task Force. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to ask Dan Matashevitz to make the presentation on this one, please. Correct? No?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, Ted Cooper, the Chair of the committee, will be giving an update of the committee's progress. With that, I'd like to introduce Ted Cooper.
Thanks, Dan. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Proten, council, thank you very much. I think I can speak for the committee in saying that we worked hard and we believe we came up with good result. It's in the report, so I'm not going to go through the details unless you have questions. Over the last three months, we spent many hours evaluating the IT environment for the city of Newport Beach. Great deal of information was developed by your own people, by various staff people, and it's our opinion that the city is getting good value for its investment in IT in terms of the quality and responsiveness of the service provided by our IT personnel, in terms of the result from the IT infrastructure, the application software, the networks. So in essence, this report will lead you to believe that you're in real good shape in terms of the IT staffing, IT infrastructure, IT software, and the information that you're getting, and that you're getting good value for your money. This report is also going to point out that the personnel that you have in administrative services, in police, fire, library, lifeguard, people in particular that spend most or all of their time in providing IT services to the city, the residents, the visitors, the businesses, have been here a long time, low turnover, they've got great institutional knowledge, their competency level is high, their integrity is high, their work ethic is high. That is, those are opinions not only of mine personally, but more importantly, this is information that was borne out in this customer satisfaction survey that we, with your staff, developed, disseminated to about 100 people, 75 percent of which responded. And you'll see in the appendix, if you click on the appendix link when you get a chance, that the customer satisfaction survey results are overwhelmingly positive. Certainly, there are areas for improvement in every area, in terms of personnel and infrastructure and software. But I would say you'll, approximately 90 percent of the responses are extremely positive and supportive and complimentary, primarily of the personnel. So I think the city is very fortunate in that regard. Notwithstanding that, there is room for improvement. The staff from police, fire, lifeguard, and administrative services developed a great deal of documentation, budgets, analyses of hardware and software, the conditions that they're in, areas that need improvement, approximately what it would cost to make various improvement, and how things can be done better technologically speaking, in every area of the city that I mentioned. So based on those, based on that information that was put together, which is all in the appendix, the report will spell out that there are approximately 30 recommendations that you will want to consider, evaluate, cost them out, prioritize them, adopt some perhaps, and also perhaps not adopt others. In the end result is going to be, you're going to have a plan, that's going to be an actionable plan, that you can go forward with and strengthen the efficiency, the effectiveness, and the productivity of IT as it relates to the city of Newport Beach. Now, as you all know, you don't want IT just for the sake of having IT. The purpose of IT is to help the city provide services better, faster, cheaper to the employees, to the residents, to the visitors, to the businesses. Now, in terms of the primary recommendations, there are several that, well, five, that are in the executive summary. And number one, it's recommended that you appoint someone to oversee IT citywide. We call that person CIO. It could be a CTO, it could be an IT manager, but someone with that responsibility, and I believe there is an open position for that, or it's being considered. So this is nothing that most of you don't know. And there are reasons why it's important to have that CIO, and those reasons are in the report. In the interim, because it could easily take six to nine months to get a qualified IT leader onboard and really firm footing. So in the interim, you might want to, and it's recommended that you appoint an interim IT leader who can begin implementing those recommendations in the plan that you decide you want to implement. Number two, it's recommended that an IT advisory group be established consisting of various department heads, all of the department heads, if that's feasible within the city, including a head of administrative services, PD, fire, et cetera, for the purpose of setting strategy, priorities, working on unification, unifying and standardizing hardware and software systems and ideas and concepts, and thereby trying to avoid any necessary duplication of purchasing or of work. And this is a committee that would provide advice to the city in terms of going forward. So you don't, you won't just have a CIO calling the shots. CIO will have a certain degree of input and advice and oversight from the IT Advisory Committee. Number two, it's also recommended that a five-year technology strategic plan be developed. This is something you all know about. In fact, it was mentioned in your resolution to us to evaluate that. We agree that you do need a strategic plan, short-term, and particularly a long-term, five-year strategic plan. And in that plan, that's where you'll detail the type of, the type of IC strategy that makes the most sense for the city in terms of hardware, software, networks, communication, staffing models, et cetera. In the appendix, you've got, you now have real-life strategic plans for five local governments, four cities, one county. These are prominent local governments, and those reports, those plans, which are being enacted now in those respective cities and the one county, can be used as a guideline, as a pattern, as a template for format, for content, for ideas, et cetera. That's something the CIO, along with the IT Advisory Group, along with other internal and external advisors, would help put together. Another recommendation is that you consolidate IT infrastructure, facilities, hardware and software, networks, as much as possible, as much as feasible, generally with the exception of any hardware, software, infrastructure, or personnel that are related to law enforcement where secure information is necessary, classified information has to be protected, people need to have certain clearances, et cetera. That is something that would be the outcome of a strategic plan, in terms of where you can consolidate and where you can start deriving savings from the consolidation. When you talk about consolidating, you're going to start saving money in hardware, software, facilities, the support structure for everything, like air conditioning and heating, lighting, et cetera, and in staffing. So, other than, other than what I've just said, the rest is in the report. I'm sorry I spoke over the limit that was imposed on me by myself. The committee worked very hard over three months. It's my approximation that about 300 hours were put in by our committee members in the committee, as well primarily outside of the committee, in coming up with our findings and recommendations. The staff that worked with us, I would imagine, put in two to three times that. When a new CIO is in position, that CIO and the IT Advisory Group will have an actionable library of real-world information, not only in this 11-page report, but in the several hundred pages that comprise the appendix. There's some real-world information, almost all of which, almost all of which was developed for the purpose of this committee and for the report that you'll see here where it's summarized. So, as you go forward, you're going to be in a good position. You've got great people now, you've got good information, and you'll have what you need to start moving forward. And you can decide what you want to, what you want to implement based on the cost, based on priorities. I do need to say that, without exception, the IT staff who we dealt with in police department, fire, library, lifeguard, administrative services, were extremely professional, competent, enthusiastic. I'm sure they had some concerns and fears, you always do when a consultant is onboard. I do this for a living, along with other things. I've been working with city and county governments and PD and fire departments for many years, doing this, as well as providing outsourcing services and insourcing services, et cetera. I'm very, very impressed with the people I've seen in this city. In terms of the staff people that we've worked with, Dan M., number one, our number-one key liaison, has been outstanding in every way. Tracy, Lillian, Dana, Dave Kiff, Mike Hen, and Dana have given me a lot of guidance along the way. Welcome Dana to Newport Beach. I'm sure you'll be very successful here. And we appreciate the leadership of the mayor getting this thing started. I, and I would imagine some of my colleagues on the committee, will, we're not leaving Newport Beach that I know of in the near term. If you need some insight or have some follow-up questions in the future, you or the new CIO or anybody else can call us whenever you'd like to, and we'll do what we can to help you. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you very much, Ted, and thank you to you and the entire task force. I see several members of the task force are here today. You know, Newport Beach is blessed to have a remarkably talented citizenry and remarkably involved citizenry. And tapping into that talent is immeasurably valuable to the city, and we appreciate the effort that all of you, as members of the task force, put into this effort, and we truly do appreciate it. Councilmember Daigle, do you have a question?
I do. I had a couple of questions first. I'm really appreciative of your efforts and the management's willingness to, you know, continually update our technologies. And my first question, I was looking at your report. I know you're IT professional. Can you explain cloud infrastructure?
No, I can't explain it real well.
Okay.
But I'll explain it the best I can, and if you Google it, you'll get a lot of good information. You know, in the old days, maybe five or 10 years ago, when you would draw a diagram of maybe a technology environment, you'd have telephones, you'd have computers, PCs, and a mainframe with lines going out from the mainframe to the PCs. And then you'd have information coming from another location, like over telephone lines or a wide-area network. Usually, they would depict that with a cloud on the diagram. And today, cloud computing has to do with information that you can access through the cloud, information you can access remotely. Right now, when you enter something on your laptop or on your city computer, I hope it's a city computer, probably that information resides in a mainframe or server behind the wall or down the street, but contained in the city. Now, with a cloud, you wouldn't need all or as much of the infrastructure or the computers you have now. You'd be, your information would reside on servers at another location. The best example of that would be Microsoft. They've recently, they're making a big push in their cloud technology, their cloud services. So that you have the ability to sign a contract with you, or I, or the city, sign a contract with Microsoft, pay an annual, monthly and an annual fee, and you could have, let's say, your payroll, certain records management capability, certain public works programs perhaps, could reside on the Microsoft servers. It may reside on one server, it may reside on several or multiple Microsoft services, servers around the country. But when you key in an account number, the information that you need is going to come to you instantaneously, may come from multiple servers. You don't know where they are. Microsoft will know where they are. And the big advantage of cloud technology is that you can get the information you need when you need it with a minimum investment in infrastructure. Also, they will provide, they'll take responsibility for disaster backup. They'll take responsibility for normal backup. They'll take responsibility for periodic updates of software and hardware. So there are many advantages of the cloud. There are public clouds, which I referred to. There are also private clouds. One of the county governments that I'm working with is developing its own, a private cloud, because this county government has about 300 county facilities throughout the county, PD, fire, libraries, et cetera. So they're going to have their own bank of servers, and they will use it remotely, and they'll have their own cloud.
And I have one additional question. I like your recommendations in terms of that five-year plan. I think that makes a lot of sense. And if you could maybe speak to the role of automation as we go forward, and then also, I know there's been some interest from our staff to update our accounting systems and what that might look like, and certainly for reasons of consistency and efficiency, and how we formulate our budget, how we execute our budget, you know, kind of how all that fits together. And then one sort of final tidbit on that, I was looking, for example, at SAP for the public sector and those types of systems. I'm sure there's other players in that space, but how do you see accounting as, in terms of how we want to develop things moving forward?
We didn't take much of a look at all at your accounting system. We know it's an older legacy system, but we did not delve into it because we were looking into the overall technology. I can't speak to your accounting system. I can't, I cannot say whether or not we believe you need a new accounting system, so I just don't know. Someone needs to spend some time to focus on that. And frankly, I'm not even qualified to look at, I'm a former accountant, but not qualified to look at a Peniemation, an SAP, or an Oracle to tell you which would be best for you, for the city of Newport Beach. So I'm sorry. I just can't give you a good answer on that one. Now, there are certain software applications which we determined you do need to maintain, to upgrade, and perhaps even replace, such as CAD, which I believe you're working, you've already decided to upgrade your CAD software for computer-aided dispatch, as well as records management. Those are critical law enforcement, life-or-death types of applications. So if you miss a paycheck or miss a payroll, no one's going to die, generally. So you want to, you want to make sure you focus on life-or-death first, police, fire, ambulance, lifeguard, and then accounts payable and payroll in general ledger.
Any other questions for the chairman?
I missed one or two of your questions. I'm sorry.
Mr. Hen.
Yeah, Ted, my recollection is that the committee determined, based on work the staff did, that we're spending roughly $5 million a year on IT. And then also recommended that we could benefit from consolidation of infrastructure and so forth. So if we were to just simply do, continue to do what we're doing today, but consolidate infrastructure, I am presuming that there would be savings to the city, I mean, or freed up resource to the city. Would you say in a significant amount, potentially?
Yes, but it could require an investment first before the savings come. And we didn't get into that. So, it's not going to take a great deal of brain power to determine what can be consolidated, what should not be consolidated, and how to move forward with the consolidation in a cost-effective, intelligent way. A CIO, an interim CIO with some good advisory people, with some basic information you have here, with perhaps one or two good external vendors who might be able to give you some help, you can put together a good roadmap for that, and then determine the type of consolidation that would make sense, how long it would take, the steps it would take to do that, to get there, and what it would cost. So yes, you would only do it if you expected that there were going to be savings. There generally are savings. I can't tell you how much, what percentage, over what period of time. Based on what we've done so far, I can't tell you that.
But we have, I think, five or six rooms that we maintain servers in today. It's conceivable we wouldn't need a single room for servers, depending upon the ultimate solution that's selected. And so we've got an immediate space savings, if you will, or short-term space savings, and an issue with regard to how we organize the new city hall, and what we use space for in the new city hall. And so there are some issues here that have a little bit of urgency attached to them. And on the other side of it, there's, I think the report identified a number of software systems that may require replacement, computer-aided dispatch. My understanding is it's likely a multimillion-dollar system, to replace it with the latest greatest. And so I wouldn't want to lead people to think that we would save a lot of money, dollars, at the end of the day necessarily. We could. But hopefully, there would be significant resources freed up that could be reallocated to areas of critical need. And that's where the real strategic plan process yields benefits, not just what do we need to do, but what's the highest priority to do them, so.
Strategic plan will put you in a real good position so that you can move forward with an effective consolidation. You'll find out that there are various consolidation routes that can be taken. So we did recommend that you retain a consultant or a vendor. You could put out an RFP. The RFP could say, "We're looking for advice on how best to consolidate." So, but it's something you can't rush into. It takes a little while. But we did recommend that since you're moving into a new civic center, you do engage a consultant from the inside or from the outside that could advise you on consolidating. Because as you said, you want to consolidate facilities and infrastructure. And if you can get it done before you move in, or before you even finish the plans for the new facility, that would be ideal.
Just one last question. In your view, is it, is it necessary that the CIO role be filled by an ongoing employee of the city, or can that role be filled by contracted resource?
It doesn't have to be filled by somebody in the city, not at all. Yet it could be. I've met a number of very impressive people in my dealings here. In terms of a contracted CIO, you could do that. Certainly, you could do that and get a good qualified person, or just hire somebody. So yeah, you've got options there. But I understand that doing it in as cost-effective a fashion as possible is key here. I mean, I understand. So, so there you go. Those are the options. Or, I'll tell you what, or go with nobody. You have no CIO now, and things are generally in good shape. However, it is prudent to have somebody oversee IT. Now, does it mean that every, that every IT person in the city has to report solid line to this CIO? The way it's written, it allows latitude to the city manager to make that determination. I have a very dear friend who just retired. He was CIO for Los Angeles County for 10 years. Before that, he was CIO for San Diego County for 10 years. And he would tell you that he's not a technical person. Well, he gives speeches all over the country, just with him at the National Association of Counties where he spoke. You don't need to be a techie to be a good CIO. You need to be a good problem solver, a good people person, and have a good, a good head about you. A little bit of general technology information, that helps a great deal too. But not, but not a super techie.
Thank you. They should be able to work the remote, though, for the VCR, and I can't do that, so I'm not going to put my hat in the ring for that. Thank you very much, Ted. I appreciate that. And thank you for your report and for your committee. I'd like to open it up now for public comments. Then I'd like to ask the city manager, who's going to be responsible for implementing some of these ideas, to sort of share his thoughts and strategies as he evaluates this report going forward. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this matter before I do that? Okay, seeing none. Dave, do you just want to sort of talk about your strategy for looking at these issues and evaluating them going forward?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I wanted also to thank the committee for all the time they put into this. They spent a lot of good, detailed work in their process. They talked to a lot of people. They did a lot of tours. It really means a lot to us as staff when you get that kind of support from the community, from such smart people. I also wanted to thank the staff members that worked on it, especially Dan, Tracy, and Dana, because they put a lot of time into it, and as well as your time, Mr. Mayor, and Mike Hen's time. So the recommended action that you'll see tonight, because this is on both your agendas, is that you would direct me to come back with specific implementation ideas and recommendations. And I've reviewed the report. I think there's some really strong ideas in there, some good thoughts as to where we need to go. For me, it will come down to an efficient, strong technologically city at a reasonable cost. And that means I need to, and I don't want to, I don't want to sacrifice good technology for cost, because I think we get to that next level of becoming a greater organization just through using technology with smart people using it. So that's the lens. I'll look through that. I'd like to report that back to you within, hopefully, two or three meetings. So potentially the second meeting in September, and then we'd have some implementation ideas at that point.
Very good. Any questions for Dave? Mr. Hen?
No questions. Just one further comment. I attended several of the meetings and had conversation with the individual committee members along the way. And one, one thing that I would also add here is that with regard to staff's involvement, there were a number of very open discussions, very candid discussions about potential solutions, including outsourcing, insourcing, contracting, cloud computing, all sorts of things, that can be sensitive when it comes to people thinking about their jobs and so forth. And I did not, I did not detect anywhere along the line from anyone involved, defensiveness or sensitivity about that. It was a very open exercise, and every staff member, IT or otherwise that participated in it, did so in a very open, objective way. And I've been through a number of these exercises in private industry, and that's not always the case. And so I think staffs should be commended for that as well.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. Thank you, Ted. Thank you, members of the task force. Your neighbors and colleagues, I truly appreciate the sacrifice and the time that you spent on this effort. It will not go to waste. It's an important part of what we're doing to make the city more efficient and more effective, and we truly appreciate your work and your recommendations. Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is the Balboa Theater. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, when we talked about the budget back in June, there was an interest on your part, as well as allocating some funds to complete the design of the Balboa Theater. There was an interest in learning more about, sort of refreshing our recollection and our memory of what the existing lease says with the Balboa Theater. I asked Sharon Wood, whose official title now is Special Projects Consultant, to pull that together for me. So Sharon, if you're ready to go?
And I'm making so much more money now with that new title. Maybe, maybe. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I thought what I would do for you is just highlight some of the things in the status section that stand out, and then do kind of the same thing with the potential amendments to the lease, and call out the items that I at least think need the most council discussion and direction to the staff who will be working with the foundation board on lease amendments. So to status, for the most part, I would say that the foundation has complied with the terms of the lease. A couple of the things that stand out as where performance is not probably what it should be is the long-range plan, which has not been submitted as regularly as it should have been, and doesn't always contain everything that the lease calls for. This is not something that I mentioned in the potential amendments, but... This is not something that I mentioned in the potential amendments, but perhaps we should review again the contents and see if they make sense, if there are things that the city actually does need to see. And then, the next area is the required improvements and the schedule for them. The foundation made significant progress on their earlier conceptual plan, which included a basement. They had gotten all the way to submitting an application for a building permit, and then looking at the cost of that construction and the potential liability with neighboring property owners. They pulled back and went to a different concept, and it's, the current lease is related to the new concept for the plan, and the progress has not been as far with the new conceptual plan. However, it was approved by the Planning Commission when the Commission reviewed and approved the use permit for the theater operation and the development plan review that's required in the Balboa Village specific plan. And that was done in September of 2004, which was on time. The coastal development permit was issued by the Coastal Commission on August 13th of 2009, and the approval of that has been extended to this September 5th. And it's my understanding that the foundation will be requesting another extension of that permit. And that really is as far as they have gotten with the new plan, although I failed to mention that the conceptual plan was just earlier this month submitted to the Building Department, and they have met with the building staff on a preliminary code review. But for the current concept, we have not seen design development plans or a building permit application yet, and those should have been done back in 2008. The next item is the employment of staff. The current lease requires the employment of an executive director, and the foundation did do that until April of this year, when the Board of Directors decided to convert to an all-volunteer organization. And so, they have no staff, although I understand that they are using some consultant assistants. And that's really all I wanted to highlight on the status and the performance. So, now, on to the potential lease amendments. There are a number of them that I won't discuss unless council members want some more detail on them. There are a lot of clarifications, better definitions of things, and updates. The first one that I would particularly call your attention to is number six, which is on page seven of the report, and that has to do with use and operation of the theater and program standards. Although, the existing lease does have some provisions in this regard. They aren't very specific. They don't have a timeline for preparation of an operations plan. It's not really clear what the operations plan is supposed to include. There's nothing about when operations should start, what should happen if there's an interruption in or cessation of operations, and probably those kinds of items should be addressed in the lease. Item number seven is with regard to parking. There's a current provision about discussing parking validation, and now the foundation wanted to talk about valet parking. And I think this section is really kind of out of date, and we could just delete it altogether, because I think it's covered adequately between the requirements of the coastal development permit for parking monitoring and the provisions in the zoning code for parking management plans, which could include valet parking. So, I don't think the lease needs to talk about that. Number nine discusses the lesses, the foundation's obligations, which include designing, obtaining permits for, and constructing the improvements at their sole cost and expense. And we should amend the lease to reflect the council's recent contribution of $175,000 for the design. And then, clarify the issue of the city's planning and building fees. When the lease was written, we had some more flexibility with our federal community development block grant, and so, I wrote the lease to provide that the city would pay those fees. And I thought that if we could use block grant, we could spare the general fund that expense. But now, we don't have as much flexibility with the block grant funds. Those are committed for other things, and I think it would be better if the council is still interested in having, helping the foundation to this extent, that the city just waive those fees. And then, the most important items that I think the council wanted to review and talk about are the required improvements and the schedule for those. And so, the foundation has presented us with a schedule for completing the plans, with the assistance the council has provided on paying for that, which would have the construction drawings complete within eight months by the end of March. And so, if that's acceptable to the council, we can include that in the lease. Number 11, currently, there's a deadline for when the building permit application should be submitted, but the lease is silent as to when the building permit should actually be issued. Of course, that's dependent on how long the city takes for plan check, as well as dependent on the quality of the plans we receive and how quickly the foundation's architect responds to our corrections. Building Director estimates six months for that process, because the plans are fairly complex. So, that, we think, would be a reasonable time, if the council wants to include that kind of a provision. Next item is number 12, when construction should begin after the plans are approved and permits are issued. Currently, we have said that the foundation should reach 70% of the budget in their fundraising efforts, and that was included, from the city's point of view, to make sure that they really had enough funds to get going and seriously do this project, and the city wouldn't be left with something half-complete. The foundation is now suggesting that that be changed to a 50% threshold, and their thinking is that if people see activity on the site, that that would help their fundraising efforts. So, that's definitely an item where we need council direction. Number 13 is the schedule for construction. It currently says 18 months. Both the foundation and our building directors still believe that that's a reasonable timeframe, given what the plans are looking like now. So, we don't believe a change is needed there. Number 14 is review of the plans. Now, this is not a zoning code type of review. That was completed because the Planning Commission has approved the use permit and the development plan review that the existing specific plan requires. But the city is the property owner, and I think, at least, that it's important that the city continue to review the plans for the theater, to make sure it's something that you believe will meet the city's goals for the theater, to revitalize Balboa Village, and so that it's something that the city feels is good for the long term, because the city may end up continuing to own it. The current lease provides that the Committee to Promote Revitalization of Our Peninsula had that review authority. That Committee has since sunset, because it didn't have additional business. So, I'm suggesting that the council may want to appoint a new committee for that purpose, unless it's something that the full council wants to do. It may also be in the council's interest to have a committee like that work with staff on the revisions to the lease, so we don't have to keep coming back to the full council with smaller questions. And we would suggest that both planning and building staff also be involved in the review of the plans, to ensure that we're still consistent with the use permit that the Planning Commission approved, and so that the building staff can catch code issues early as possible. And they can also offer some advice on constructability and long-term maintenance and cost of construction. Now, moving off of the improvements, on to number 15, the employment of staff. The foundation has suggested that that provision be removed from the lease. And although I believe that an all-volunteer organization at this time probably makes sense for the foundation, so they can concentrate on fundraising, when we get to the point of the construction of improvements and ongoing operation of the theater, I think it's important that there be professional staff. Perhaps during the construction period, it's a consultant, so there may be some different ways to write that section, but it's at least my opinion that it should not be deleted. And then, finally, item number 16 is insurance, and the city has changed our insurance requirements since this lease was written, and so, we would want to work with the risk manager to do a complete review of that. The foundation has asked that the comprehensive general liability remain at $2 million, which is a reduced amount from what it had been the very first time the lease was approved. And they're asking for that just until such time as there are operations, and they understand that the amount would need to go up. So, that, those were the things I wanted to highlight. I'll be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
I think most of the suggestions here are good ones. I have been concerned that the organization doesn't have paid staff. I think that you lose something when you don't have paid staff. Obviously, one thing you lose is a salary, which you have to pay, which is helpful at this time. I understand that. But there are certain things we weren't getting with paid staff, and it makes me even more concerned that we'll get them with all volunteers. Volunteers are great, but volunteers always have very many interests, and they're not focused as an employee is. So, I think the creation of a council committee is an excellent idea, to be sure that we are getting timely information and getting a lot of input, and perhaps helping the foundation stay on track for this project that we all want to see succeed. So, I would certainly support that, and would be interested in being on it myself as, with a history with the theater. I did have a question. We do own buildings. We occasionally improve them or something. Usually, it's us. Do we have a situation where someone else is doing something, and we're waiving fees for them with a city-owned property? Or, because, I mean, there are the theaters, and we don't waive things for them.
I believe that the city did the improvements to the Newport Heights Theater.
Okay. So, that's, we do have some consistency there. I think those are my main comments.
Thank you. Mr. Hen?
Well, following on to Councilmember Gardner's comments about staffing, it seems to me that there's coincidence of goals here, because for the foundation to be successful with fundraising, I think they're going to need to demonstrate that they have a viable plan and product and ability to execute it, and to be able to demonstrate that. So, while I'm not as concerned about having an executive director on staff immediately, because there will be a period of time, well, really, basically, all of the work will be associated with getting the building permits and so forth, I do feel that sometime well in advance of the completion of construction, and perhaps sooner than that, I'm not sure. We'd have to talk about it. There really needs to be an executive director on board for the foundation. There are issues of operational planning, programming, coordination with other entities associated with the programming, promotion, et cetera, talent discussion. There's just a myriad of issues that need to be lined up and ready to go by the time construction is done, so that the theater can then open and operate successfully. And so, I'd recommend that we work it out with the foundation, when that executive director position is going to come on board, and then, perhaps ahead of that, some solution regarding the construction management as well, because that'll be so critical. I recognize that that does put a little pressure on the foundation's resources, but, on the other hand, I think it'll actually be helpful for the foundation's fundraising capability. I do have a question, and then, I think there are several items here that they're looking, staff is looking for direction on, maybe we can sort of go through. But I have a question on number two here, under the potential lease agreements, amendments, having to do with who owns the improvements. It's my understanding on a ground lease that ultimately, if the ground lease expires and there's something on the ground, it belongs to the owner of the ground. Isn't that typically how it works?
This is not a ground lease, is it? We're leasing a building.
We're leasing the building, we're leasing the property. I mean, fundamentally, ultimately, it seems to me that the city owns the improvements here. Is that right?
The current lease agreement has two separate provisions that address that. One discusses ownership of the improvements and separates certain things, such as fixtures and whatnot. And then, it also talks about the leasees' ability to remove things upon surrender. So, our office simply said that if we're going to go in and amend this agreement, let's clean this up, to be perfectly clear. Since we're not really talking, what we are really talking about are some big, large improvements to be done to a facility that we would expect the city would retain ownership if the property was transferred back to the city, or the lease expired. So, we're just asking to clean that up.
So, if the lease runs 25 or 30 years and expires, and there's a building on the ground, it's the city's building, right?
Yes, and we'd like to make sure that the lease sets that with full clarity.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd be happy to defer unless, if somebody else has individual comments, but I was thinking maybe we should kind of go through here and get a consensus.
I think Mr. Selich would like to say something. Maybe we should just go through and do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I generally agree with the staff recommendations also, but I also have another question, and that is, on the schedule, we're talking about the 100% construction drawings, March 31st, and then, there's mention of an 18-month schedule for completion after the building permit's issuance, but there's no discussion of the time in between. Like, if your plans are done by March 31st, is there a timeframe to actually submit them into plan check, to get them into plan check, and get going on that process?
Well, that was what we were covering in number 11, and suggesting six months for the plan check process.
For completion of the plan check process, you're saying?
Yeah, but is there any timeframe? Are you assuming, then, that the plans are going to be submitted March 31st, so it's six months after March 31st?
Yes.
Is that what we're assuming here?
I was, but I wasn't clear about it, so the lease should be.
Okay. That'd be good if we clarified that. That's my only comment right now.
Thank you, Mr. Selich. Mr. Hen, do you want to sort of make your comments relative to the direction of the staff, and we'll see if you have a consensus on that?
Okay. The first item that I would raise for consideration here is item number three, which is the term of the lease, including these options. I would suggest that maybe we defer a discussion in the lease about options until we understand what the city's flexibility is to grant lease term and options as a result of the charter amendments that are...
I think that's wise.
And so, I would suggest that. And then, item number five, staff is looking for a direction about how the option to purchase would work. Yeah, the purchase option on the part of the foundation, in the event, it's a right of first refusal, I guess, basically. How that would be calculated, I don't have a problem with staff's conclusion on it, but I frankly, not sure I really understand the whole of the back and forth on that, to start with.
I think basically what they're looking to do is value the building as of today, as opposed to the purchase value back 1997 or '08.
But what I don't know is...
Adjusted by the CPI.
Yeah, how does the CPI calculation on the original play against that and so forth?
Well, and is it CPI, or is it the market value?
Well, I looked into, is there another index that's available to use that tracks real estate prices? And I don't believe there is one, so if we want some kind of an index, then the Consumer Price Index would be the one to use. And it reflects decreases as well as increases, and so, the lease now provides that it be the cumulative change in the Consumer Price Index. So, it ought to reflect the recent decreases in property values, as well as earlier indices.
It'll have no effect in reflecting property values. It reflects the cost of prices. It will be a positive number, as opposed to the negative number, which is what real estate values have been.
Quite honestly, you know, if they want that, I'd give it to them, because I think the value of the property is worth more today than it probably was back when we bought it in 1998, as adjusted by the CPI. So, I'd say, you should be happy with what you have. I'd certainly pay more than $480,000 for that piece of property, adjusted by CPI.
So, I'm back where I started. I'm sort of ambivalent about that whole issue, so. I guess that ought to have some more discussion with the foundation, and then, you'll come back with a specific recommendation. come back with a specific recommendation. There is this item number 12 here, about the amount of fundraising that should be done, in place before construction has started. And generally, I'm, I'm for leaving it at the higher threshold, because one of the things that we don't want is to get really stuck with a substantially incomplete project here in the event of a problem. But I would solicit other council member views on that.
Yeah, I would agree. You don't want a project that's, that would be worse than what it is now, a half-built project.
Yeah. So, all right.
Yes, if we're going back to 1998, by the way, it would have been a positive number of stake.
I, I think, by the way, we should solicit comment, I see the foundation chairman is out here, and so maybe once we go through this, Craig, if you have comment, you can step up and give us your point of view here.
Well, essentially, that means that then they would be having 70% of their funds raised six months after March 31st, 2011, so that's September of 2011, a year from now? Is that realistic?
Well, I think we need to hear from the foundation about that.
Why don't we invite the foundation chairman to come to the podium? I know they probably have some comments they'd like to share that I'm sure is going to be helpful to the council as we thrash around up here.
Do I have a little slide presentation? Will I do that?
Sure. I think I'd say it's going to be, it'll be an improvement, guys, it'll be an improvement.
You know, we're going to have to give her a raise now.
It was a doctor's raise, we're going to try it out.
It was in the IT report.
It's like the AV monitor in high school. You plug AV monitors, you know, you plug chalkboard, chalk fingers.
Okay, go ahead with your presentation, and maybe we can let it warm up here a little bit and catch up with you.
My presentation, we could then go back.
All right. Why don't we move on for just a second, then?
Item number 12.
Yeah, I was. And so we'll, we'll wait for Craig before we finish that discussion. But item number 14, with regard to the design review committee, I think it is a good idea for us to form a committee of council. I would be pleased to serve on that committee. I think, Nancy, you indicated you would, and I don't know how many we need, but, and I think it is a good idea to have another, you know, current look at the plan with staff to make sure that we're not starting off with a set of problems here that could be avoided. Craig, did you want to, are you all set now?
I'm all set, right.
Did you, did you want to specifically comment on this 70% threshold thing, or do you want to go through your presentation?
Why don't I go through my presentation very quickly, and then I'll address the questions, or certainly attempt to. First of all, Mayor Curry and council members, thank you for giving me an opportunity to meet with you today, and also thank you for the recent support that you've given the foundation, it's much appreciated. And we have taken heed of Councilmember Gardner's admonishment to make haste, so we are not, we are showing urgency. I just thought it would be useful for everyone here to see exactly where we sit today. Now, that's a rendering of the front of the theater as proposed in our current plans, and it's submitted to the coastal commission, and so on. Some background about me, some of you know me, others don't. Again, I'm Craig Smith, I'm the secretary, treasurer of the foundation, and I've been on the board for about five years. I'm an engineer by training, a former UCLA professor, and retired president of Dem Jim Homes in Narver, a very large international architect engineering firm that had projects around the world. And I served as a construction executive on major projects, from designing a waste-to-energy power plant, to the renovation of Cal State Northridge following the Northridge earthquake, and also worked as, we had responsibility as program managers for the renovation of the Pentagon before and after 9/11. I've been a peninsula resident since 1999, a donor to the foundation since, basically, that time, on the board since 2005, and my wife and I, and several of other board members, have also matched the city's donation to the foundation over that period of time. So we're equally committed, let's put it that way. I'm also an author, as some of you know. One of my books was How the Great Pyramid Was Built, and my interest in that was determining how many people it took to build the pyramid, and how long it took, and I mention that only in the expectation that it will not take as long to build the Balboa Theater. Some recent milestones of where we stand, some of these have been mentioned by Ms. Wood. The coastal permit first awarded in 2007, with some requests for additional information, which we then provided. In June 2008, we selected our architect, John Fisher, through a competitive negotiation and selection process. In 2008, we had a community-wide design charrette, where we brought in various members of the community, artistic people, heads of artistic organizations, and sought their input into our design. And then, in June 2009, we finalized our conceptual design, submitted it for review, and in October, commissioned a scale model to be built, and I'll show some pictures of that, in case you haven't seen it. It's a tabletop model. And in May, we appointed Marnie Burris. Marnie is one of our directors, she's also an employee of Disney Imaginery, and responsible for Disney's theater projects, Disneyland, and Disney World in Florida, and in Asia. So she oversees about $400 million of theater work for Disney. And she will be heading up our design review committee, and we will be having meetings, our design review meetings will take place at Disney Imaginery in Burbank, and I invite any of the council members to attend those, should they wish to do so. She has also solicited some pro bono support from the Disney design staff to assist us with that process, and we've had our first meeting there. And following the commission, the council action in June, we gave the architect the notice to proceed in the 1st of July, so we're trying to move ahead. Our vision for this is that it will be a key part of the renewal of Balboa Village and the peninsula, along with the Nautico Museum. We see the Nautico Museum and the Balboa Theater as being centerpieces, or linchpins, as it were, for the development of the village. The theater will offer a broad spectrum of entertainment possibilities, including film, drama, dance, music, live performances, and things that we have demonstrated in the past three years through our season without walls. The other thing that we've added following our, our meetings with community people was a strong educational element. We believe that's not only very important to the community with these programs being eliminated from schools, but it's also an important ingredient of our cash flow and our long-range plan. So we don't think there's anything quite like what we're proposing in Orange County, that it will be unique and will be a sought-after facility. Some examples of programs either were selected from the season without walls, the events that we had in the, over the last three years, some of these took place in the Barclay Theater, in the Performing Arts, in the Discovery Science Center, in the Beckman Center, the Bowers Museum, and other collaborating institutions.
Craig, I think we're all pretty familiar with the, with the program offerings, I think everybody's been very supportive of the theater. We need to get to the specifics of this lease agreement, so we can give some direction and move us forward here today.
Okay. I'll try to speed up then. So this is the elevation view, shows the seating arrangement, with the seating extended, there are 300 seats, and they're telescoping, which means they can all be drawn back under the balcony. And again, the architect's view of the front. Here's the seats extended, and the stage is pneumatic, so it can be raised or lowered, so it would be down for a film presentation, and up for live theater. And this is what the seats look like when they're retracted. This gives opportunities for cabaret-type performances, or banquets, seminars, other options, and it's, one of the things that came out of our meeting is the importance of having flexibility in the design. And of course, this is a possibility which opens up all kinds of arrangements. Then on the top of the building is a roof deck, and we have a couple artists' views of how that might be for receptions or fundraising events. So with that, let me address the questions, then. I guess the first question, and maybe this isn't the right order, but concerning our executive director, we believe that our volunteer operation is working quite well at the moment. We never intended not to have paid staff once we entered operation, and the long-range plan, which we've submitted to Sharon, describes how we will be functioning when we're in full operation, and you look at the plan, you can see we have paid staff in those positions. We certainly would not attempt to enter into operations with a volunteer staff, so the comments of the council are well to the point, and certainly accepted. The next step...
Craig, on, on that issue, I think it would be good to have an updated long-range plan, and an updated initial operations plan as a part of this process. And so that was going to be one of the things that I recommended, and I'm presuming that's not a problem for you.
No, it's not a problem. The plan, it was recently submitted, Sharon's, is about three months old. Then the question was on the 70% fundraising versus 50%. Well, our request was 50%, because we believe that once we start construction, we'll be able to raise additional money, it'll be easier to get people to raise the money. If the council wants to stay with 70%, we'll, we'll certainly accept that.
But at that threshold, is there enough time in the current timeline?
Well, it sets the bar higher, obviously.
Referring to Councilmember Selich's issue here, that takes you to September of 2011.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the question was there, the, the, Sharon, what is the design completion date, March 31, 2011, right? So at that, that's the date, by that date, we will have submitted for a building permit, that's what that means, and the lease can so read. And then, the building department gave me estimates of three to six months for their approval, so we put in six months, right? So six months from March brings us to September, which would be the start of construction at the latest.
But, we're now seeing a threshold of 70% pledges or, you know, donations, so is that, how is that timeline, September of 2011? Is that an adequate timeline to get to 70%?
That's, that's a difficult question for me to answer.
Well, so that's something to think about, then, is what we're...
What's the dollar amount that you need to raise by?
Beg your pardon?
What's the dollar amount you need to raise by September?
We need to raise about $4 million.
On top of what you already have?
Correct. So if, if we're able to, and, and we have a double-pronged effort underway, looking at donors who are interested in major, major contributions, that would be in the seven-figure number, and we're also looking at corporate naming possibilities. So if either of those happen in near term, which we hope, we're going to exert every effort that they do happen, that would put us at the 50% mark, and then the 70% mark would probably not be that difficult. If we struggle, then the 70% mark could be a challenge. There was a third question, but I'm sorry, I forgot what that was.
Mr. Rosansky, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I, I understand the challenge, but I think, you know, we have a bar, I think you should set the bar high. I imagine you'll be back in September of 2011, asking us for an extension if you don't have your 70%. So, you know, for my money, or your money, I'd just as soon leave it the way it is. I mean, we're talking about a year and a half from now, but this has been a 12-year project, and I think everybody up here would love to see you folks have your grand opening.
Right.
So rather than later.
Certainly understand. I will tell you, it's a different organization today than it was six months ago.
Let's hope so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Those are the only, those are the only items I had on the list here for...
All right.
Does staff have adequate guidance? Is there, did we leave anything else, guidance on anything you need?
I had one question. Does it matter that the executive director would be immediately a full-time person, or it just, there's a person titled as executive director that may at least initially share duties, say there's some other organization that one works for? I don't know if that helps them or hurts them.
I personally think that would be fine. I think we need to recognize sort of the economic realities that we're in, and professional expertise comes in a lot of forms.
Well, it's my understanding, do you, Craig, do you have any arrangements in place for consultants or otherwise?
Well, yes, if I may answer, at, at current, we do have a consulting agreement with Mary Lonic, the former executive director. That's in place, and at the moment, Seth Segal, our chair, is the acting executive director.
But, my point was, as you are approaching opening for operations, sometimes, well in advance of that, you do need to have a full-time dedication.
Absolutely, yes.
You would agree with that, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, this is not a part-time project. If this is going to be successful, you'd have full-time dedication.
And in fact, as we near the, say, two-thirds point of completion on construction, we would not only be recruiting that person, but we would be developing a premier season, an initial season. These are things that you can't do over a weekend. It does the years of lead time to get the types of performances and, and programs booked that we would want to have in an opening season.
So this is why I specifically asked, we, we ought to see an update of the long-range plan, and perhaps addressing some deficiencies that staff has mentioned, but also a version of that first-year plan.
Correct.
We ought to see that, too.
We do not have a version of the first-year plan at the moment, but that's something we're working on.
If you're not going to have an executive director on board till you're partway through construction, who's going to be in charge of overseeing the construction when you get started?
Well, we have several, several options for that. We have construction management firms that we believe will be willing to do that on a pro bono basis, though we'll make that decision once we get ready to order a construction contract. We would have a professional in one way or another.
Is that something that maybe should be included, then? That there needs to be some kind of professional, whether it's contracted or whatever, in the lease?
We would have no objection to that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on this matter? Staff, Sharon, do you have some final comments?
Just a couple questions to make sure that we are clear. I assume since there was no council comment on number six, the use and operation and program standards, that your direction is to add detail to the lease there, which is now lacking.
now lacking. And then, the waiver of city planning and building fees is acceptable?
Excuse me?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is public comments on items not on the agenda. Please come forward. State your name for the record. You have three minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Hilliard. I'm the executive director of the Construction Industry Force Account Council. We represent contractor organizations and trade unions, and our concern, the framework is your proposed amendment to the charter, section 1110. We had some key phrases in there that we were concerned about, and as a result, we put together an opposition statement to the, an argument against the charter amendment. And the reason I was here was to appeal a decision on the part of the clerk that we were not qualified because of technicalities, and we followed everything that the clerk asked us to do. This was our first time through, and we did not intentionally violate the rules, but we feel that the city had some responsibility in not giving us guidance. So, I was going to originally ask you to accept changes and allow us an extension of time to do the right thing. However, in the meantime, our organization and your attorney have talked to each other and are in a position, I think, I could ask your attorney if he is willing, to, well, I really appreciate Mayor Curry, that you and, and the attorney and the city council members have addressed our concerns, and in many ways have made an offer to help us not to have to oppose you. However, I can't speak for, directly, do you think your council would be able to?
Well, let me ask Mr. Hunt to opine on this matter here.
If I may. I'm Mr. Hunt, so...
Okay, sorry, I was...
That's all right, that's all right. Yes, I've been in con... Well, let me tell a bit of the story. As the council knows, that there was an election challenge that was ongoing. There was an argument that was submitted that, in our opinion, did not satisfy the requirements of the election code. The city clerk, in her discretion and in her authority alone, not this council, not anyone else, in the ministerial matter, made the decision based upon our recommendation to reject the argument for those reasons. That having been said, since that time, we've been working with the attorneys for CFAC. They have indicated they would challenge our decision or recommendation to reject the argument, and therefore were faced with potential litigation. In that discussion, however, we've come up with potential language that could solve the entire problem, that whereby if the council took action tonight to accept some modifications to our amendment to charter section 1110, then we would forego any mandate proceeding, legal challenge to the rejection of the argument, and any ballot challenge on the issues. This, this is a matter that does have threat in litigation. You may add it to your agenda, both in closed and open session. It came up since the posting of the agenda within the last 72 hours, and although, it would need a four-fifth vote of the council to make those findings, to add this to your closed-session agenda and to your open-session meeting. And I can make that recommendation based upon my communications with CFAC's attorney.
And just for, so we're clear for the record, Ms. Hilliard, based on the language that's been passed back and forth between your attorney and Mr. Hunt, that is sufficient that your organizations and you represent an umbrella of organizations will not oppose this ballot measure, the charter amendment?
I want to just tell you that it's difficult, I'm going to give you a yes, but the, the reason that I want to, it's, I report to a board just as your staff reports to you. It's hard for me to take the permission without calling around to get that permission. However, I feel confident that I can get that permission if you make those changes.
Okay. I've looked at these changes. I believe that the council will find them amenable, and so I would entertain a motion that we place this matter on the closed and on the open agenda for the council meeting this evening. We will need a four-fifth vote to do that.
I would move. Second?
Okay, is there any further discussion? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Ms. Hilliard, are you, any further comments on this matter before we vote?
No, except to say I really appreciate your willingness to work with us.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, hang around, we'll be back at 7:00.
Okay, are there any other additional public comments to be made?
All right, seeing now we are adjourned until 7 o'clock.